That's the first time that seat has ever asked that.
I can't sort of last.
No, I know. Think about it, that's the first time.
Okay, we're being, we are on the air. I call the Town Council and School Committee Joint Work Session to order. The date is Wednesday, January 16th, and the time is 6:39. We could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the School Committee, the Town Council, Municipal Administration and Staff, as well as the School Administration Staff. Thank you. Tonight is the third session of the Capital Improvement Program, and it's the School Committee's Time to Shine tonight. So on the agenda, we have the Capital Improvement Program 2013-14 through 2018 to 2019, Long-Term Financial Program with the school programs, the Proposed Capital Budget School Program, and the School Committee Proposed Capital Improvement Program. Keep in mind that this is a Capital Improvement Program Budget Work Session. We'll hear from the public at the end, and we also have on the agenda any other matters of interest and concern for later dialogue if anyone wants to bring anything up. So at this time, I'd want to refer our Town Council to page 56 in your Capital Improvement Program documents, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristin, Dr. Kristin Stringfellow. Thank you.
Good evening. Very pleased to be here with you again. So this evening, we're going to run through our capital plans for you and answer any questions that you might have. So this gives you a brief history of the bonded program as I know it. We have, prior to 2009, since a facilities audit was done in the community, you budgeted $1 million annually to bring the facilities into repair. And then in 2009, you were budgeting every other year to maintain facilities, and at that time, it's important to note that the Regents put a moratorium on housing aid and the necessity for school construction applications changed. And so what you've seen from 2010 to this year is that we have no projects planned and that in 2011, it was really technically an off year due to uncertainty in state revenue, as was 2013. This year is an unscheduled year, and so most of the dollar amounts that you see will be put off till the following year. And so it's not going to be surprising to see that in the next couple of slides, I wanted to highlight for you visually, in the dark gray, that's the year that we're living in, and in the yellow, that's the year that is our planned budget, really is the focus of discussion this evening. So there really isn't anything for this year in the high school or Hazard School, which now formerly was the preschool, is now planned for use in the alternative high school. And in Curtis Corner Middle School, nothing for this year, but you're seeing a plan to replace flooring next year. And at Broad Rock, nothing planned. That's our newest facility. At Mattoonik, although nothing this year, you're looking at our plan to replace the roof addition, the addition of the roof, the additions roof, next year. In fiscal year 2017, flooring and entry, in the entryway and in the front corridor, and in fiscal year 2018, replace the heating system. At Peacedale, nothing this year, but next year, replacing the roof over the gym, and in fiscal year 2017, replace the rooftop unit ventilators. At Wakefield, next year, we replace the addition roof. At West Kingston, next year, replace the addition roof, and 2017, replace the flooring entry and corridor, and in 2018, replace the heating system. At South Road, no plans. And in the administrative offices, replace the HVAC and the flooring 2017. So the school department totals are reflective of, nothing planned for this year, fiscal year 2015, a million dollars, 2017, 600,000, 2018, a million dollars. It's important to note at this point, before going into the 5200 planned projects, that there has been discussion at the School Committee Table led by Mr. Miller that references the need to sort of bring forward again another facilities audit. And so if there are any questions on that, or you'd like elaboration on that, we can certainly speak to Mr. Rashat. But the conversation at the School Committee Table has been that it might be time to revise our facilities plan, to take a look at the shape of the infrastructure of our buildings and the building envelopes, and if there is money left over at the end of this year, that may be a priority for the School Committee. And so I think it's important to speak to, even though projects aren't planned, it would give us a nice roadmap to make certain that the data really syncs with what we believe as a school department we're in need of.
Jim?
That was done in what, 2001, '02, Scott? When was the last, okay. What did that cost, 75 to 100,000?
We have, John can speak a little bit to what we've researched, how much it will cost for this one.
Yeah, I mean, except for Broad Rock, I certainly think this is awfully important that we have this done. Obviously, they're aging, and I don't know if they're increasing in depreciation. We certainly have done a great job keeping them up, but we would like to know, since Steve's in charge of how we're going to fund all these things in the years ahead.
We did get a ballpark figure from, we talked to a couple of vendors, mainly RGB, and the number that we were given was about 60 to 70,000 to complete the audit. And that would also give us the data we need for the Stage 1, Stage 2 filing with Ride and the Board of Regents for housing aid.
Steve?
This is the issue that I've talked to the Council about a couple of times, because it's where we are now, it's more than just the audit that needs to be completed. It's the Phase 1 and Phase 2 applications for the state funding. That's a whole different process than what used to be in place. So the consultant that would be secured would also be responsible for assisting in the filing of those applications. I think the one thing that we need to make sure is different from the last audit, is the last audit took things all the way down to a maintenance effort of changing washers and faucets as a cost. And really, what this should be looking at is anything that's not related to maintenance, but rather anything that truly is a capital project and over $10,000 in terms of cost. The study should look at what the maintenance efforts are that are necessary, that where there's deficiencies that are shown. But the breakout should be for capital costing, that would be for bonding purposes only, because we're not going to pay for maintenance items through a bond issue where there's a 20-year repayment. And that's where we ran into, I'm sure, Scott, you recall it, the problem we ran into with that 2002 audit, was there was difficulty. The other thing that's important is the 2.6 million that's shown here at this point, if it hasn't been evaluated effectively since 10 years, the concern really is that we had placeholders, particularly on the West Kingston and Mattoonik schools, that we really need to get a much better handle on. It may be that the 2.6 million is far more than we need, or it may be that it's inadequate for what the needs would be. What I would hope to see is that the audit could be completed so that we would have it for document preparation for the next year's CIP, so we would need to get this done probably by August 15th. For the schools' purposes, you're also going to need, if there's a request or a need for additional bonding authorization, to be able to have the justification, because you're not going to get the bonding authorization for the referendum at the General Assembly level without having some nuts and bolts as to what costs are going to be. So, yes, we've had placeholders for the last couple of years, but we've got to get serious at this point and effectively evaluate each of those buildings at this point. So hopefully, if the School Committee can get that project underway this spring, we will be in a much better position next year when we come to this meeting.
Any other questions here at the table, or School Committee Table? Carol?
I just had a question about the Hazard School. With the change in use from a preschool to a, some kind of technol, what is it, a VOTEC type of high school, or whatever you're going to use it for, wouldn't that require certain capital improvements to make those changes?
Not at this time. The classrooms are very big, and they're, they have ample space for the type of programs that we're envisioning.
But the, I mean, the bathrooms and everything, they're all in, great.
Yep, and the maintenance folks did a very good job swapping out the smaller-sized toilets to bring to South Road and taking the larger-sized facilities and bringing them back to Hazard, and that's already been done.
Oh, wow. Very good.
Any other questions? Steve, I didn't know if you wanted to just elaborate a little bit on that 35,000 less on, I think it's page three of the budget document?
Page three?
One of these placeholders in this budget.
With the School Department Proposed Capital Budget for the school fund is presented in the amount of $2,050,000, $250,000, but the proposed spending is 35,000 less than the current year appropriation. So just for the public's knowledge-
Yeah, we're going to, she's going to go through that section now on the 5200 account, and then we'll address that presentation.
Thank you.
So that was, that was the, that was the capital bonded program, and sometimes I think it has been confusing for community members that there really are two separate features that we come and discuss with you this evening. So the bonded program, as the manager alluded to, really needs to bond and have, and go through the necessity of school construction process, and we don't have any projects planned in that area. The next section for presentation to you is actually the planned projects that are inside of our planned operating budget. So we call it the 5200 account. And usually, those projects, because of the requirements for a monetary amount, are in the area of maintenance projects, technology projects, and athletic projects. And so you'll note that this year, we really have focused our efforts in the area of technology and only have, we have no athletic projects planned. We only have one minor project planned with maintenance, and that is a very necessary vehicle replacement. And so, oh, he already switched on me. And so what you're seeing is highlighted in 2013, I don't have that one in front of me. Give me one second, please. And so you're seeing that we are focusing our efforts in elementary computer lab, administrative computers, which are not computers for administrators, but are like teacher workstations or adult workstations. That computer equity replacement, we have a schedule that we have to keep network hardware and track. We're all done last year. And for this year, we're seeing, I think the dates are wrong on the top, you're seeing an investment in the high school computer lab, 35,000, middle school computer lab, administrative computers, computer equity again, network hardware, and vehicle replacement. And this year, because we had such discreet questions that were posed by the Council last year about the track and about some of our projects, we actually asked some of our district staff to join us, depending upon the level of the questioning. Although John and I can certainly give you a thumbnail sketch, if it's required, we can call upon Mr. Snow, Mr. Derocha, or Mr. Lynch in the audience. I think one of the questions that we heard last night was relative to the park assessment, and although we are investing in technology, what will that look like? So I don't know if you want me to give you an overview of that, or if there would be specific questions. Yeah, okay. Go right ahead.
I see, head shaking.
Okay. So what you're seeing in our operating budget plan is you're seeing just a carry-on of the investments that we make every single year. You're not seeing an infusion for the park assessment, and that was deliberate by the School Committee. We were asked to participate last year in a technology survey, and Mr. Snow continues to provide data to the Rhode Island Department of Education on our infrastructure and hardware needs and what we now have in each of our buildings to support the implementation in 2014. What we saw legislatively last session is that the legislators passed a, passed a bill that would bring money to supporting districts in the area of technology as sort of the first wave for the park assessment. We were originally thought to be receiving 600,000 in order to continue our efforts. We have heard from the Rhode Island Department of Education that we are, might not necessarily be entitled to that money, that when they've done the review from all of the districts, that they thought, instead of taking districts who have invested their money over the years, there are some that have not been able to, quite frankly.
Can you move that mic on the other side?
Yes, certainly. There are some districts that have not been able to invest their money in technology, so they're falling very, very behind. And so there was some thinking at the Rhode Island Department of Education that some of those districts would need to be brought here, where we are, if you will, and that we would not necessarily be entitled to money because we had already completed a lot of the infrastructure work on our own. My response to that, John's response to that, has been, and I know you're looking quizzically because you met with the legislators this week, so I'm going to hurry up that story. So John and I, and as well as Mr. Snow, have spoken to Ride and said, although we have invested wisely and done our very best effort to maintain our technology plan within our district, our programs would be old compared to very new programs that the Rhode Island Department of Ed would be able to put into districts who have not been able to invest within their own operating budget. So we've been arguing that point. Representative Walsh had spoken to us at our last School Committee meeting and said that, from her perspective, we are entitled to the 600,000, and she will do her very best to bring it our way. We've not heard anything yet, but we very much trust in what she's told us. We feel as if Ride is going to have to make a substantial investment in each district in the state of Rhode Island to bring them to park readiness standards, and so the School Committee's direction has been that if the legislation doesn't come through to give a second wave of money that we may or may not be entitled to, we will have ample time next year to plan to put it in our operating budget. But if we put it in our operating budget this year, we may be disregarded again.
I just have a quick question. I guess I'm assuming that this has nothing to do with the upgrades that we're going to be doing with the town and technology and computerized equipment. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct. The software that we're going to be dealing with, with the School Department on, isn't part of this. This is the, all of the hardware that the school system would be using. Administrative computers that are here may be tied in with the software that they'll be share-buying with us, but the rest of this is for academic purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, Kristin, the $20 million bond issue that passed last fall, is this roughly the 3% of that number?
This is the 600,000 that I'm talking about. Say it again, please, I didn't hear the last part.
It's roughly 3% of the 20 million, 600,000. You know, I keep thinking of our population, not of students, but just of the town. I would like to think we would have gotten our share of it. Is this because we're ahead of the curve? Because we're well-managed? We pay that penalty? What am I looking at here?
How we are interpreting it is that our technology staff in our community has done our due diligence to make certain that we are staying at pace with technology, and that there have been communities that you obviously have seen in the newspapers and whatnot that are in bankruptcy, and they have not either been able to or chose to invest. So there's some unevenness throughout the state. As was legislated, we were entitled to, let's say, 600,000. Those are the conversations that John and I had with the folks in Ride until recently. The recent conversations have been sort of, this is the way the money came through the door, but the way it's going to be spent truly needs to be spent to bring those districts up into par with districts such as South Kingston. Now, while I have deep empathy for other districts, my heart lies with this district, and so I would say that the folks in our community have advocated strongly that that doesn't seem very fair. And so we believe with the representatives' help that our voice might be heard.
Thank you.
I think Alan wanted to-
I just don't remember the bond issue giving me that definition that these were going to be for, that if you vote approval of this district-
You are correct.
-South Kingston could miss out any of it. I don't remember it saying that.
You are correct.
I thought this was statewide, I thought we'd get our share of this.
That's what we assumed.
Alan?
Yes, I had talked to John last week in regards to the subject that raised his concerns to me, so Monday night after the meeting, it obviously ran over, and we, I wasn't able to bring it up with the legislators, but I was able to talk to Senator Sinowski and Representative Tanzi after the meeting and mention the concerns. So she indicated if the School Committee could prepare something, send it to both of them, they would distribute it to the South County legislators to make sure they were all aware of it, because those two weren't aware of it, for whatever reason. So if you can get that information out, then it could be something that we build to support that way. And also, if she said anything from the Town Council as far as supporting it, would be appreciated also.
Right, so if you prepare something, and also can CC us on that as well, because we can, we would love to support that.
Thank you.
Steve?
I think there's one other point that's important here, is that while, yes, we have technology in the schools that is, probably exceeds that of many other school districts, with where technology's moving and the number of Wi-Fi devices that would want to go through that network at the same time, we do not have the capacity within the existing networks to be able to address all of the different uses. So, yes, it may be a case that we have a basic program in place right now that serves the school districts with Wi-Fi, but if we get into people being, and children being able to bring their own devices into the schools, as well as the testing requirements, the amount of traffic would not be accommodated based on the existing hardware. So a portion of that 600,000 is certainly necessary, or there's major expenditures through the op budget, that will be necessary for the School Department. It's not like we're looking for 600,000 and we don't need it, to address what the specific purpose was that the money was bonded for, but it's a case that we need to be able to augment the existing system and make that a far more enhanced system capable of supporting many more devices that would want use of that system simultaneously.
One of the features that has been unknown to us until very recently, John and Doug and I have been asking, what is the ratio? Is it 1:1? Is it 1:2? Is it 1:3, meaning one computer for every one child, two children or three children? Is it going to be the expectation that we establish sort of like a computer area, a testing area, and bus children from throughout the community? Or is it expected that in every school, there is a computer area that would be large enough to do this testing at one time? Mr. Jackson referenced something that just sticks in my mind, that if every child in grades 5 through 12 were to access the park assessment at the same time, we might have a brownout in the community in terms of, you know, all of the energy going in one location, and that's a very real concern. So there are, there are infrastructure needs, and then there are workstation needs, and then there is the need for children to have had experience writing while using a laptop. So most students in Rhode Island are writing with the pen and pencil, on paper, and so to then have them revise and edit and start being assessed on a computer is very different, and it's not something that all children have had the experience doing in a school setting. So really, when you look at the advice, it's asking that children beyond these laptops or workstations for a year or two, learning that way before they're assessed that way, and that doesn't look likely. The Commissioner this week has come out with guidance, saying that it looks as if the needs will be 1:3, and really has not been more specific than that in terms of what we are needing to plan for. So that's another concern, putting something into the operations budget that would take away from another area when we're not quite sure what the best solution is. We're also confident that eventually, by next year, Rhode Island Department of Education will have to do some bulk purchasing, whether they're purchasing it or whether we can get in on purchasing it. We think that the hardware may be cheaper.
Carol?
So obviously, we need the 600,000. So whatever we can do here from the Town Council in the form of a resolution to support this and send it up to the State House, to all our legislators, if we could have help in drafting this, because you guys know what you're talking about when it comes to this, Mr. Snow, whatever it is, we, you know, I'd be happy to put that forward, but I certainly need help drafting this.
Certainly, thank you.
What it is exactly what we're looking for. I know the number, 600,000, I can get that, but I think we should do that as soon as possible, and I'm sure we would all support it.
Steve?
To address the question that you had earlier, as far as the budget for 2013, what was shown here is 290,000, because that's what was adopted at the time that the capital budget was adopted, at the end of January of last year. That 290 was then reduced by 60,000, because what we did is the School Committee agreed to take 60,000 out of the 11-12 year as upfront money to be used for the track redevelopment. So depending on how you want to look at it, it's either a 230,000 budget in current year going to 255, or it's a 290,000 budget going down to 255. But the true number on that was that from the final school budget that was adopted or, and re-adopted by the School Committee after review with the Council, that 290 did come down to the 230 number. So essentially, 214 would have a 25,000 increase in effort that would be capital-associated. But, you know, as we go forward, we'll look at the budget as we go through the process and determine where we go from there. But that 290, realistically, was a 230 number, and I think that's what you wanted me to address, Al.
Jim?
Yeah, Kristin, I neglected to bring in our December discussion. I think I remember you placing a per-student number on technology, did you not, in a number of areas in the operating budget?
Yes, I did.
Now, was that based upon what the property taxpayer portion of this was? Did that count grants and other federal monies towards technology? I'm always confused with that combination.
This, UCOA data measures only operating budget, not federal grants or like Title I or IDEA. YuccoA data measures only operating budget, not federal grants or like Title I or IDEA. So YuccoA is looking out of our operating budget based upon our per pupil expenditure. And so if we're looking at technology, our South Kingstown per pupil expenditure, as shown in YuccoA, was $39 for every, and the state average was $157. So it was 75% below. But I'm going to caution it by saying that sometimes folks aren't comparing apples to oranges. And so we know that the data that we submitted is accurate and was submitted as best we can with the requirements. But sometimes people can interpret technology different. Are they saying, you know, just hardware, or, you know, Alpha Smarts, or iPads, or what?
I was confused with that number, because I just didn't know what we were able to, on a cumulative basis, what came in through grants and federal programs. What would that 39 number look like, adding that all together?
Yeah, I think that would be hard to, it wouldn't be hard to calculate for our own use at some point, but to be able to compare district to district, we don't have that comparison data available to us.
Thank you. Do you have another question? Go for it.
Can we talk about the track?
Please do.
Or we're on technology, we're on Ts, right?
Your preference, track or technology?
Well, I'd love to learn about the track, because we put a maximum number on there for the improvements. And I always, weren't we in the middle of a discussion of how many layers down we had to go, and the widths, and did this conform to the secondary school? I'd love to know all that, just how it all turned out. Am I the only one that has an interest in the track?
And maybe we'd like to hear from Mr. Lynch as well.
We'll let Terry help us after. What the project actually did do was to strip the top coating off, which was a process in itself, haul it away, and then repair some of the asphalt surface, the base surface underneath the track. And then the other thing we did at the same time was to find the cause of the problems. We were cracking in places, and we had some lifting in places, and it turned out that it was roots from the nearby trees. So part of the project did a trenching or cutting of the roots so that they were broken and they wouldn't repeat that. Those areas were cut out, track was leveled, then a new rubber coating was put on top of the track, and then a sealant on top of that, and then the striping was reapplied. So we have pretty much a new track. I mean, it's come out very nice, very smooth, and hopefully we've prevented any of the cracking and the rises from happening again. As far as the sanctioning of whether that track meets, you know...
All of the track work that they did, that we...
Mr. Lynch, if you could come to the mic, thank you.
All of the components of the track were compliant with all high school and college tracks within, around the country. So it's a Cape and Island track, they do many tracks in New England, on the East Coast. So we are, our track right now, our track surfaces what you see at Harvard, what you see at Boston College, Northeast and all the college tracks.
So we used all the funding that was approved last year for that?
We did.
And then some out of my budget.
Fair enough.
And what we did, I think, was a positive with this renovation of the track, was to put the coating on top.
Yes.
That wasn't done in the past renovation, and it didn't last as long as we anticipated it would. So with the coating on this time, we look for a longer...
A longer life. Anybody that's been over to the track in the last couple of years, you'll see that there were a lot of the little nubs and the little black nubs, I'll call them, all over the place, because it wasn't properly sealed the last time that we did the track. So we added that this year, we're looking at a lifespan longer than the track that we had previous.
You missed it last year, Mr. Lynch, we talked about the little...
Nubs.
Dark pieces of asphalt for a very long time.
Okay.
So we had no frost heaves? I am, the base was in place?
No, the base was in place, as John had said, the problem that we had some lifting were some roots from trees. So we ended up cutting a couple of spots out, and hopefully now we're good. And we had, the town came in and dug along one of the areas of the fence that we saw that there were going to be a lot of roots in the future, so they dug those out, so we should be okay.
Can you just give me the layers, how it works? Maybe a foot and a half of gravel or sand, or just can you walk me right up to the surface?
The bottom surface I am not familiar with. All I can just tell you is that, because that was placed down before I got here, so I couldn't tell you that part.
But how about the other layers, thickness?
It's, I think it's two inches thick, an inch and a half to two inches thick of, it's interesting the way they did it, they laid a surface down, they had to let it dry. They laid basically four surfaces down before they put the top coating on. So it goes to about an inch and a half to two inches.
Thank you.
Well, while we have you up there, Terry. How's the floor in the basketball, in the gym?
Beautiful.
Yeah?
Yes.
So we didn't get an, is it a new floor now?
No.
No?
The last renovation was just stripping it down to the bare wood, and then painting, repainting the lines, getting it navy instead of the older, off navy, if you will.
Right.
And then just repainting all of our lines. So they just stripped it down.
And they beat Hendrickson last night?
And we beat Hendrickson last night, yes.
Yes! Wow. That's huge.
That is huge.
So there is a South Kingstown advantage in one of those corners?
There's a lot of South Kingstown advantages in that whole gym.
Yeah.
The floor was not repaired, it was just lipstick on a pig, if you will.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? The only question that I have is, if the park assessment does move forward in 2014, and we don't have the computers lined up, would it be similar to what we experienced with the map testing that takes place at the high school, where classes of kids are taken to the library? I'm sure that's how you do it with the NWEA testing. And is that testing still going on?
Yes, the NWEA testing is still going on in the way that you're describing, and we're not sure how it's going to be mapped out for the park assessment. Recently, the commissioner has talked about the fact that, very recently, like a week ago, has talked about the fact that throughout the nation, states are grappling with this concern, that all of a sudden it's upon us, and Rhode Island is not alone in feeling underprepared. And so what will that look like? And so there has been discussion lately of an option for a waiver in some states or in some communities to take the test with paper. But that doesn't, it seems to be just a thought of how they may proceed to deal with concerns in the future. But we're not honestly getting a lot of feedback on how to prepare for the assessment.
And I just want to elaborate a little further. The NWEA, is that grades nine through 12, or nine through 11?
We have also done it in middle school.
Okay, and I'm specifically just focusing on the high school at this time?
Six through eight.
Six through eight. So nine through 12 at the high school. And is it done three times a year? Twice a year?
I'm not certain. I do know that last year, we had some difficulty calibrating the educator evaluation, and so we have made some changes for this year, but I would have to check with Mrs. Lisi to find out specifically the changes, to answer your question.
And what I'm looking at, Kristin, is how many weeks does that shut down our library or other computer labs? That's really what I'm looking for. And I think if the park assessment does move forward and we end up with a model that we're using similar to the MAP or the NWEA, whatever you want to call it, how many weeks does that really shut down our facilities for, our technology, computer labs? Thank you.
Certainly.
And I don't know, maybe if Doug Snow had any answer to that?
We set up the NWE testing for updating all the students. Most of the time, it's one class grade at the high school, but like you said, we run them through the library with the laptop carts. It's probably about a three-week evolution at the high school, twice a year is when we do that. Same thing at Curtis Corner or at Broad Rock.
How does that work with portfolios at the high school? Because I know a lot of the children prepare their portfolios when they're in that first classroom that they go into, but a lot of them do that in the libraries. So is that inhibiting them from getting computer time to prepare that requirement for the state?
Not all the time, because at the high school, we have like a learning center for them. We put in a high-end copier that basically they can log into the copy machine, and it actually scans right into their portfolio area, so they don't lose files on computers and things like that. So we have other facilities for them to use.
Okay, thank you.
Another question that I would have is, I mean, if the park assessment moves forward in 2014, and there has to be one computer per child, and I think there's about 1,000 students at the high school, and we have 500 computers now, would that be laptops so that they can be shut down? I mean, do we even have space at the high school to set up maybe two more computer labs?
You're correct, the spacing is a huge issue. We've looked at it, even the, you know, if you tried to put them in the classroom, Curtis Corner, there's no rooms in the classroom at all to put computers. Broad Rock, we found areas that we can put. We've been, we've been doing, instead of just buying an individual computer, we've been using this company, a lot of schools use it, it's called Capital N Computing, and it basically takes one computer and makes it into many computers. So the processing of a new high-end Dell computer, quad-core processor, can basically run tons of images at the same time. At the elementary schools, we put three in every single elementary school classroom over the summer, and that lets, and basically, I think the best thing about it for teachers is they're always on. It's not like the kids have to boot the machines up and get them running. In the background, there's one big one that sits in the closet, but in the classroom, there's three individual ones, and it'll run up to 45, and we've tested it up to 90. So it brings the cost of the actual computer down. So that's a small footprint where you're basically putting a monitor, a keyboard and a mouse, and power to the box and the monitor, and basically the little box connects to the back of the monitor itself. So it's a small footprint, fits into the classroom. We found three to six, and we found that the, in the elementary schools, the way they teach now, the old days are dragging them down to the library and putting them in and have everybody pull the laptops out. The way they, their teaching now is different than that. They break them up into smaller groups where they can take six students and put them in and say, this is your assignment, and now six over to this side. So they've broken the room up that way, so we've tried to facilitate that to help them with that. So, you know, we've talked about the ratios of that, and a lot of people have said, do you want to pull all these kids out and jam them into a, you know, a computer lab with 300 computers? Now take the test. The scariest thing about the parks is, it's a full-day test. It's not like it's a two-hour block, it's an entire day. So that, to me, I don't, you know, it's like you are pulling these kids out of their environment to basically try to test them for an entire day. So like you said, to use the libraries, to use the computer labs, I have to factor those numbers in, but nobody else can use those. So if you're testing for three days, that's, 12th graders can't use any of the labs, they can't use the art lab, they can't use the guidance office, they can't use the library area. We'll need those machines at this time.
I was talking to a former student of mine who is working in the technology School Department of Coventry, and they're in the process of setting up this Capital N Computing, I believe. So are there, is that the way that other districts are going, setting it up to this capital?
A lot of it for the cost, yes, you have to. I mean, a new Dell computer is $800 to $900. We just, in my budget, we just can't, you know, replace that many. The teachers need a high-end machine. What we're finding now is, a lot of my teacher machines are eight, nine, 10 years old. 80% of my teacher machines are that old. We've replaced them all at Broad Rock, we've replaced them all at P-Stell with brand-new PCs. And a lot of the new technology, like smart boards, responders, has to have a high-end machine to run for that. But the student machines in the elementary school, middle school level, a lot of it is collaborative learning now, so you're not running programs on the individual box. It still runs off it, so it still runs all of that off of it, but they're not actually, they're in the cloud environment more. So you're not actually really using that individual machine. So we can get away with this, and it still works fine to them. To the students, it's totally transparent. They just, they just log in and off they go.
Mr. Snow, how many kids would be tested in one day? What do you anticipate? That's the big question? We don't know?
Well, if it's one to three, we looked at the ratios that the commissioner wants, you would basically, it's going to be third and fourth grade, so you would basically have at each school, I crunched the numbers for that, you'd have to, it would be a three-day evolution for those, for those students. You'd use the library areas, you'd use the laptop carts, whatever's available to them. So it would be a three-day evolution to do the third and fourth grade. And it'd be a three-day evolution to do the fifth and sixth, and same with the seventh and eighth, on that type of thing. So it would, it would be, it would be a logistical nightmare on how you're planning to do this. And we've seen this with the, we've done the Nimble Test, we beta-tested that, and we ran it, you know, I had my, my staff out, you know, on station, and we ran into this. And it wasn't even, it wasn't our equipment, we, you know, we thought it was the N Computing, we put it into a brand-new, high-end lab with all new computers, and it still didn't work. So sometimes it's the software's that's the issue. And Mr. Jackson's resolved that, hey, all of a sudden, it's not just going to be us logging into this parks exam, it's going to be the entire state logging into this parks exam. And we've seen this with the teacher evaluation program, where it's fine when I go up and play with it and beta-test it, and then all of a sudden, my teachers log in and it doesn't save their files, and it locks up, because now you have thousands of teachers using it at the same time. That's my biggest concern. I think the bandwidth, our infrastructure with the $600,000, a lot of that infrastructure is my high school. You know, I've been here for 12 years now, I've built pretty much all the, all the infrastructure for the high school. It's 12 years old.
Yeah.
We have switches that sit in closets. That are 12 years old, that run all the time. We have fiber that's 12 years old. I didn't think we'd ever have to replace the fiber. For the new technology, for the wireless and access points everywhere, we're going to have to replace the fiber. That's another cost that we're going to have to concur. So the 600,000 on that was also, a big part of it was, every town had to do a survey. So they asked me for all of our information, what I needed to get to that, Parks 2014-15. So that 600,000 is basically just for infrastructure. It's not for computers, it's not for any of that. So if the other districts didn't fund out and didn't do their due diligence to find what we need to get to that 100% high-density wireless, that's going to be our future for hopefully the next 10, 15 years. That's their mistake. So that 600,000, trust me, I have my company in E+. We're doing an audit now on our entire network to see all of our stuff, to see what we're going to need. I'm sure I can spend that whole 600,000.
Are the results of that survey online?
For each, it is on Ride of what each breakdown for each town was. So you can see what all the other different, I think Cherahoe was 360,000, and Narragansett was 300,000, some of the other ones. North Kingston was about 850,000, was part of theirs.
Do you have any say in how quickly you get the test done, or is it all like you have to have it done in these two or three weeks?
Well, I think...
You're saying the third and fourth grade would take about three days in each school. Could you drag that out a little, a week, if you needed to?
Well, I think the toughest thing is, we don't know the time allotment that they're going to give us for parks. It could be, you have only three days to accomplish this. It could be two weeks. So yes, you could, but that's a big unknown right now of how long that test is going to take.
That seems like it would make it a little easier on the system, anyway, and the staff. I don't know.
So the good news is that everyone's in the same sort of equation here. Everyone in this state and in many of the other states in our nation. And so we're not inventing the wheel alone, and I can liken it back to when we moved from the Metropolitan Achievement Tests to the kneecap. It was an unknown. They had, they came out with a testing window and guidance and mapped it out for us in a way that was reasonable. And so it's overwhelming, but we can do it, and so we're expecting the same from the park. The unsettling part is that we, the questions that you're asking, we don't know, the answers have not been revealed to us yet. So as soon as we get more information, we'll be happy to share that out with you.
The actual test is not out there yet. I mean, that, I think that's the scariest part of it, is they just went out for bid for all of the company that's going to design the test and implement the test and basically house the test. That's still out for bid.
Any other questions? Jim?
Steve, you mentioned a lot of this equipment was 10, 12 years old, yet that was probably pay-as-you-go part of our budgets years ago. Why not bonded? Is there any way we can extend this into the bond debt world and not pay-as-you-go out of the operating budget?
I think a lot of it depends on...
I think a lot of it depends on what the overall costs are and what the life is. I mean, within this budget itself, you've got $690,000 that's projected over the next six years to... For computer equity in the schools and replacement. So schools are budgeting $115,000 a year to try to keep up with that. I mean, if you recall, last year, we ended up changing all the wiring in this building because we needed a higher-grade wire to be able to accommodate the number of users that we had. You know, the more that the computers do something for us, the heavier the infrastructure is that's necessary to be able to power that stuff. And so, I mean... And the other thing, too, is that if you look at the grants that have been used over the federal grant money that's been used for technology, there's a lot more than just $115 a year that's been used. The real question will be if we've been able to keep up using federal grants and the pay-as-you-go capital budget of the probably about $100,000 a year, are we going to survive if, in fact, the federal cutbacks occur, which we anticipate? But to date, you know, the schools have had the luxury of being able to assign a good deal of the federal dollars into the technology area.
Thank you.
I guess my parting question on that is, do we have a timeframe as to when Rhode Island Department of Education will get us the information?
You're such an optimist, Mrs. Whaley. No, we don't.
It's unbelievable.
We're doing the very best we can with very limited information at this time.
Any other questions?
Are we still on technology, or have we moved to open-ended?
We're still on the tease.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to do technology?
Yep.
Go ahead, open-ended. At this time, if there's no other questions in reference to Kristin's presentation on the capital improvement program, if there's any other items on the agenda? Jim?
If you can help me out, I was thanked yesterday by a couple individuals for approving the new contract.
Wasn't that nice? Thank you, Jim, for approving the new contract.
And I... So if there's any information you can help us out with, I really appreciate it.
Certainly, there are copies of the tentative agreement online, and certainly we can have them emailed to you if you'd like. Copies of the impact statement online have been online since last Friday. Teachers ratified the contract on Thursday. School committee ratified the contract on Sunday. John has not slept in a week and a half because he has been taking that information and transitioning it into the budget that was presented to the school committee last night. And so it has been... It has been laborious in terms of trying to bring over all of the information, but it's all transparent. It's there for the public and certainly for the council, and we look forward to continued conversations at our later budget meetings.
Can you just give me an idea what the... Was it specifically salary? Were there any changes in the medical end of things, longevity?
There were no changes to medical or healthcare co-pay. There were changes in terms of educational learning opportunities for students. We were able to provide the ability to have programs such as a high school summer school program, extended day offerings, and we were able to have a class-size flexibility factor. When I first arrived, we were at one of the middle levels, one child away from adding a four-person team to the middle school. That's a very real issue that we deal with when children arrive that are unplanned over the summer. And so we've created a flexibility factor by providing one student, class size less in every classroom, elementary and middle school. And then in terms of the financial package, as you know, our teachers' co-pay rose dramatically in the last round of negotiations, moving from essentially five to six percent with a J-PED offset to now 15 percent for the lowest-step people, teachers, and 20 percent for the highest-step teachers. Eighty-five percent of our teachers are at the highest step.
Eighty-five?
Yeah. Yes. Sorry, not yeah. Yes. And we have maintained that. The... There is not a salary increase to everyone next year. It is a stipend, and it is for top-step teachers only. Teachers, as you know, one through nine receive state-mandated step increments, so they would not be affected. And the following year, 2.25 percent increase to all teachers and two-year contract.
The 2.25 is in the third year and...
Second year. There is not a third year.
No... So of the current contract, the third year is still zero?
Of the... The current contract now has a first year and a second year.
Right. We're in the second year of the three-year contract.
The former contract has now been replaced with a successor agreement. So essentially, the third year of last contract is now the first year of next contract.
Steve, I'm having difficulty there. Can you pull that together for me?
Let me try. We're in the second year of the contract?
That's what I said. I thought we're in the second year of zeros.
So the third year is going to be the first year?
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
And the third... That now first year is going to be a two and a quarter?
No. That first year is going to be no increase to teachers in steps one through nine.
Right, got that.
No increase to the base for teachers in step 10. A small stipend to all 10-step teachers. And the following year, 2.25 percent increase to teachers in steps one through 10.
This year is year one?
Are you talking about the year we're living in or the year we're budgeting for?
The one we're... The one we're in right now?
The one we're in right now is still a zero.
Okay, but isn't that the first year of the three-year contract?
No.
13, 14 is year one.
Year one. But it's a two-year or a three-year?
Two-year.
Two-year. Okay, I thought you said three-year.
14, 15 is year two of the contract, and that is the last year under the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I think I'm there. Oh, I do have one question. The... Kristin, the Met School, is that considered a charter school? How does that... Where does that fall into the...
It's considered a state school.
A state school. But we pay tuition for our kids that go there?
Yes, we do.
At the charter school level, or what kind of a...
$7,966.
And that will... That will continue to increase until we hit our per-pupil cost. So the money follows the student concept, and that will happen... This is the third year of the tuition escalation, so we have two more steps, and that supposedly will get us up to the per-pupil.
And transportation... That does not include transportation?
We do not have to transport to the Met School. They're out of our region. And that includes the Met School and Providence and the one in Newport. It's out of our region.
Newport is out of the region, but Providence is in the region.
It's out of the Washington County Region 6. Yeah.
Okay. And roughly, how many kids do we have going up there?
Fourteen.